I would like to call the regular scheduled county council meeting to order for Fairfield County, Monday, March the 11th at 6:00 PM, Windsboro, South Carolina. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the approval of the agenda. Next, we have invocation by Pastor Jimmy Burrows. If you would come forward, please.
Thank you for your love and your mercy. We thank you for a time that we can come together and we can discuss things of the county. God, I pray that every deliberation made from this council would be made without any personal agenda, but for the good and the betterment of Fairfield County. God, we all love you. We all have differences, but we always come together to get a job done. And I thank you, God, for this group. I thank you for these people. And I pray, God, that you will see over them and protect everything that happens here with your guiding hand. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. So Pastor Burrows, today's your birthday? Today's your birthday? Oh, okay. Thank you. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February the 26th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February the 26th, 2024. Now, we are down to public presentations. Item A, Comprehensive Plan. Gregory Sprouse from the Central Midlands Council of Governments.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here tonight. This is a presentation. But we're, I'm here to talk about the comprehensive plan. I'm going to provide a brief overview, tell you a little bit about the mechanics of the document, how it works, as well as some of the overall themes that are presented in it. And then if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So to start with, just for those of you that aren't familiar with our agency, Central Midlands Council of Governments is one of 10 regional planning agencies across the state. We serve Richland, Lexington, Fairfield, and Newberry Counties. So every county in the state belongs to one of these 10 regional planning agencies. And we do a range of services, everything from community and economic development planning to transportation planning to providing social services to seniors under the Older Americans Act. My program areas as the Director of Research Planning and Development is to work on, work with our local governments on community development projects. We do regional economic development planning. And then we work with our local governments to assist with local planning efforts, planning and zoning, and meeting the State Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act requirements. And that's primarily what I'm here to talk about tonight. So to give just the high-level overview of what the comprehensive plan is, it's an overall plan that's designed to contribute to a healthy and pleasant environment to help thinking about balancing in growth and stability, reflecting economic potential and limitations, protecting our investments to the extent reasonable and feasible, and to serve as a basis for regulating land use and the development process. So the Local Government Planning Enabling Act of 1994 tasks the Planning Commission with developing this plan and then recommending it to council for adoption. Under state law, it's required to be reviewed every five years and then comprehensively updated every 10 years. And it requires the plan to take into consideration adjacent jurisdictions and other local and regional plans or issues that may impact the jurisdiction. So the planning, the State Planning Enabling Act outlines a planning process that requires us in this document to do an inventory of existing conditions, basically describing what is the community like now, and to back that up with relevant data, maps, and tables. And then we have to present a statement of needs and goals, which is basically a vision statement of where the community wants to grow into the future. And it should include long- and short-range goals for achieving that vision. And then finally, we have to have some implementation strategies with timeframes. So this basically tells us what, how we prioritize the strategies that we identify in the plan. The other part to it is that the state law requires the plan to include 10 elements. Originally, it was nine, and then the Planning and Enabling Act was amended in 2020 to add a new one. And I'll tell you a little bit more about what those required elements include. So population, and the way I've organized the document is to try to, each chapter, address each one of these elements. So population element looks at historic growth trends and projections, talks about the number size characteristics of households, educational levels, basic demographic information. There's a natural resource element that discusses the key environmental characteristics, climate, soil, land cover, water resources, forestry, agriculture, that type of thing. There's a cultural resource element that looks at historic buildings and structures, historic districts, cultural, historical institutions and organizations, festivals. The economic development element looks at labor force characteristics and provides an economic base analysis, basically who are the big employers? Where are they located? What sectors and industries do they represent? And then what are the employment and unemployment characteristics of the community? The transportation element looks at current transportation infrastructure, traffic characteristics, transit options, rail infrastructure, airports, everything that goes into a multimodal transportation system. Then the community facilities element is a really important one for a jurisdiction like Fairfield County because it really inventories all of the services, the public services and infrastructure that are operated and maintained by the county. So water and sewer utilities, solid waste collection, public safety and emergency management services, government facilities, education, and parks and recreation. The next element is the land use. So this is an important one because the land use element provides an analysis of existing and future land uses. And this is what sets the stage for the zoning ordinance. So it looks at densities, existing land uses, and has a future land use map that provides the context for thinking about the vision for growth and development into the future. And then the priority investment is intended to help prioritize, and it looks at all potential funding mechanisms for how to fund projects and proposals that are presented in the comp plan. And it talks a lot about the importance of capital improvements planning. And then the last element, the newest one, is the resiliency element. And this one is an inventory of existing resiliency conditions that really focus on natural hazard mitigation and planning-related activities. So what are the big natural hazards that can really, the county is vulnerable to? But we also look at things like economic resiliency, impact of any major economic downturns and how the county is positioned to recover from that type of incident. And it also has a really important consideration related to coordination and collaboration with other local government entities. So I know that's a lot to take in, but as I said, the way that we've organized the document to make it easy to show compliance with state law is each chapter is associated with each one of these required elements. And then each of the elements starts with the existing conditions inventory, presenting the maps, tables, and supporting narrative. Provides, most of them provide a summary of key findings. And then there's the goals and supporting strategies at the end of the chapter. And then at the end of the document is the implementation plan that takes all of the goals and strategies that have been laid out in each chapter into a matrix and puts them in the context of priorities and responsible entities. So one thing I did want to mention, just in terms of thinking about the comprehensive plan and what it is and what it isn't. I like to use the example of building a house. If you're going to go out and build a brand-new house, you're not just going to go grab a piece of land and start building. There's a lot of planning that goes into it before you actually break ground. You have to think about things like who you're building the house for? Or is your family growing? Do you have aging parents that you might have to take care of in the future? You have to get an idea of how big it's going to be. You have to think about the site itself. What are the soil conditions? Can it support it? Are you close to infrastructure? How close are you to your work and your commuting time? So that transportation infrastructure becomes a big piece of it. All of these things are really important considerations before you ever break ground or hire the architect even to start building the plan because those are the questions that they're going to ask. So I like to think about the comprehensive plan as that initial planning phase. It's that concept plan that sets the stage for the, for the tools, actually creating the construction drawings that you build your house from. So it's not a regulatory document. It is an overall vision of the goals and the trajectory of growth and how we want to see the county grow and develop in coming years. Things like the zoning ordinance and other related land development regulations, those are the implementation tools. Those are the construction drawings for building your house. That's how you get it done. So this, the comprehensive plan typically comes first and sets the stage. And then we work towards using the implementation tools, such as the zoning ordinance. So this is just some examples of the maps, the way that the implementation strategies are laid out. And I just want to close on highlighting some of the key themes and recommendations. So from that population perspective, when you look at the population data that's presented there, we see two things. We see a declining population in the historical period, and we see an aging population. So we definitely want to try to balance those, the sides of making sure that we're doing everything we can to provide the services to care for the aging population, but also to try to attract new growth and development and younger workforce age populations into the future. The housing element really points to the need for embracing the county-wide housing study that's being, being developed right now. So we recommend doing a county housing-wide study to really look at all the detailed aspects of the housing needs. That's underway, so that's a strategy that's already going towards the implementation phase. Also, in the economic development, tried to align that really closely with the economic development strategic plan that council has adopted in the program of work. One recurring theme is that we heard a lot about and have tried to incorporate into this is the need for promoting outdoor recreation and tourism as a means for community and economic development in the county. The county has a lot of fantastic natural and cultural resources that could really be assets for creating that outdoor recreation and tourism industry. Also, small business development is something that we definitely see a need for, support services related to that. And of course, on the infrastructure side, water and sewer improvements to create new and additional capacity. The primary recommendation under the land use element was related to updating the zoning ordinance and land development regulations. So again, like the housing study, that's something we knew going into this was going to be a big priority and that the county has already taken the initiative on working on. A couple of other things is town center revitalization. So the plan does recognize that need for close intergovernmental coordination with the municipalities on that land use side of things, as well as helping to promote the revitalization of the town centers as a means for revitalizing the county as a whole. And then the last thing is capital improvement planning. Both the priority investment and community facilities elements recognize the need for developing a good, robust capital improvement planning process for the county to, to make sure that it's prioritizing its capital improvement needs. So that, I'll conclude with that.
Thank you, Mr. Sprouse. Any council members have any comments?
Do you have like a timeline of we need to do this in three years? And this needs to be done in four years and five years?
So the, the back, the implementation chapter outlines all of these higher-level types of goals. And there's a timeframe that we really organize into short, medium, long-term, and ongoing. And so the short-term ones are really the ones that kind of need to be the next, next couple of years. The mid, medium term are two to five years. And then the longer-term ones are the ones that we want to look at over the next 10 years.
Any other council members? Chairman Robinson, I mean, Councilman Robinson.
I take the money, though. Mrs. Sprouse, thank you. Not about the, the plan, but I was wanting to question you about, since you're in front of me, the previous work we had did with the merging with the city for dilapidated houses. Any plans on us, or can we try to recoup that money prior to COVID? Or any plans for us to pursue that?
Yeah, we're still, we're still working on that and hopefully getting that, that project finished up. Yeah. But I, and I will say too, the plan does recognize countywide the importance of code enforcement and looking at, in that housing side, the, the needs for housing, minor housing rehabilitation, as well as helping to bring down some of the old dilapidated vacant buildings.
Thank you. Ms. Green, did you, did you have something?
I'm just thinking about a few things. First of all, thank you for the work you've done. A number of people have come to me to talk about the, the fact that the health part that we have here, the health status in all of our population simply does not look good. And the fact that in the future, we certainly are going to need to make sure that we have some additional facilities and all that will kind of help us to care for our population. The fact that we don't have a hospital and the fact that, you know, emergency rooms and others might not be enough. We probably need more nursing facilities and those kinds of things in the future. So at least I thank you for putting this in here so that we can get an idea of how we have to address that in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Sprouse. Next, we are down to 6B, 2023 Audit, Malden and Jenkins.
Thank you all for having me to go over the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit. My name is Grant Davis. I'm a partner with Malden and Jenkins out of Columbia. And I think you've got hard copies in front of you. So I'm going to refer to some pages as I go along. One thing, just from a preliminary nature, we have issued a document that we call our Auditor's Discussion Analysis Document. It's got this image of the state capitol there on the front. Just want to explain what the purpose of that document is. For the most part, we've published it to communicate to you all some things that we are required to communicate as a part of conducting your audit. And those are things like we're independent of the county. We didn't have any disagreements with management in conducting the audit. We didn't encounter any significant difficulties in conducting the audit. And again, all of that's memorialized in this Auditor's Discussion Analysis Document. There's some additional information. There's a few charts. You can see the general funds, revenues, and expenditures by type in a pie chart. Anyway, just hopefully some, some relatively useful information to you being provided there. So with that, I'm going to, again, not refer to it at this point and just go through the financial statements themselves. And that's the thicker of the two documents. And the first thing to mention is on the first page, it's actually right after the table of contents, but that's our opinion on the financial statements. And we've ultimately issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion. And that opinion, pages, they go on for three or four pages there, discussing what our responsibilities are in the audit, what the county's responsibilities are. But again, the major takeaway is that we've issued a clean opinion on these financial statements. The section right after that is called Management's Discussion Analysis. And it's maybe after the, the opinion, probably the most helpful portion of the document because you get a comparison of 2022 to 2023. You can see how things have changed, how amounts have gone up or gone down from a large-scale perspective. And then there's narrative discussion as to what caused those balances. And then just after that section, we get to the basic financial statements of the county themselves. So just a few things to note, the general fund is usually of primary interest. If you're flipping along with me, you can go to page 13. And the general fund's balance sheet is on page 13. It's the column at the, sort of the far left. And general fund reports assets of about $18 million versus liabilities of just under $2 million. So it gives us fund balance of about $16 million. And that's in a decrease of about 1.9 million from 2022 to 2023. So a decrease from about $18 million in fund balance to about $16 million in fund balance. Now, I think it's important to note when we talk about fund balance, if you take that as a proportion of your expenditures for fiscal year '23, the general fund's expenditures for fiscal year '23 amounted to about $34.5 million. If you simply just divide that number by 12 and take that as a percentage of the general fund's fund balance, that gives us about five months of fund balance on hand at June 30, 2023. So what, sort of what I'm trying to communicate is if you didn't take in another dollar after June 30, you could operate for five months at spending 2023 levels, which is, was honestly a pretty healthy place to be. If you think about, I maybe have mentioned this in the past, but if you think about your major source of revenues being property taxes and the calendar for which those are typically collected, being January for the most part, maybe a little bit in December, a little in February. To be at June, which is a relatively lean time of year from a cash flow perspective, and be able to get all the way back around to functionally November without taking any additional money is a pretty healthy place to be. And it's really, for the most part, a decent benchmark to evaluate the fund balance of the general fund. Are we at five or six months of fund balance to get us back around to the time of year that our cash flows are typically coming in heavily? Just after that, you can see on page 15, the income statement of the general fund, about $34 million in revenues versus about $34.5 million in expenditures. And again, the, the general fund's fund balance decreased by about 1.9 million. The majority of that decrease is the general fund transferring monies between funds, other funds of the county, so moving money for various purposes to other funds and being accounted for there. Just after that, you'll notice pages and pages and pages of footnotes. I will say that certainly the dates and the amounts have changed in there, but the content largely is unchanged year over year throughout all of that. The other couple of things I wanted to mention to you, if you kind of flip all the way to the back, if you're hanging in there with me, we've ultimately issued two additional reports. So this document includes three reports on our letterhead. The last two begin on page 95. And this, this report on page 95 is our report on internal controls and compliance with And this report on page 95 is our report on internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, grant agreements, so forth and so on. This report is not designed to offer an opinion, but to provide what we call negative assurance, which is to say if we note any instances of noncompliance or any internal control deficiencies, we're required to communicate those to you all and reference those in this report. We did note one internal control deficiency that I'll talk about in just a moment, but otherwise, no instances of noncompliance or other issues. The third and final report we have issued is on page 97, is the first page of that, and that's our report on the county's compliance and internal controls with spending associated with federal money. You're probably familiar, but if you expend more than $750,000 in a fiscal year in federal monies, it triggers a compliance audit with federal guidelines. We were required to audit two of the county's major federal programs. One of those was the airport improvement program. One was the ARPA program, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. We've ultimately issued an unmodified or clean opinion on compliance with the spending of those, associated with those two programs. So clean opinions all throughout the document here. Now, the last thing that I wanted to mention here, pages 100 and then 101, 100 will just give you a summary of everything from a reporting standpoint that I just mentioned, again, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, the federal programs that we audited from a compliance perspective and things of that nature. Page 101 is the internal control deficiency that I wanted to mention to you all and go over. The title is the same as the one that was issued in the county's 2022 report, but certainly I think very different than the situation we were in in 2022 with about $95 million in activities not being recorded at that time. This year, I think the best way to characterize this is the county over-recorded a little bit. There were some things that, specifically in the Fairfield Facilities Corporation Fund that were recorded by the county, I think, out of an abundance of caution to not be back where we were at 2022, that weren't. I don't want to get too bogged down in the accounting matters, but the Fairfield Facilities Corporation issued bonds back in 2013 that were refunded by 2021 bonds. The 2021 bonds, the proceeds of those bonds were used, are going to be used to make the debt service payments on the old bonds. This is going to get a little confusing. We'll try to keep it all straight for y'all. But once that money is deposited in an escrow account with a trustee, it no longer belongs to the county anymore. That cash is simply set aside to make debt service payments on those old bonds until they are callable or they mature. The county recorded the proceeds of those cash accounts this year, and we had to take them off, because like I said, it's just not, that debt's not debt of the county anymore. The terminology that's used in the legal accounting world is defeased. The debt, for all purposes, is defeased, even though it remains outstanding. It's not a responsibility of the county anymore. So the big number there was to take away the cash that is set aside to pay those refunded bonds that was recorded. But otherwise, I think a significant improvement, both in timeliness, the county got an extension with the state treasurer's office, which was unique this year. I was glad that the state treasurer's office did reinstitute the ability to get an extension, and that was awarded through the end of this current month. So we certainly beat the extension timeframe and certainly beat the report date from last year, I think it was June 28th or something like that. So about a year late, or a year after the balance sheet, I could say. And again, I tried to, or we tried to reword the verbiage in this controlled efficiency to reflect the fact that there have been improvements. And I think if you read it carefully as compared to last year, you'll note some important differences from 2022 to 2023. So I think even though that we did have an internal control deficiency, I think things are much more positive from an accounting and financial reporting perspective than they were as a part of that 2022 report that we went through, I think, at length. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have, if you have any.
Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I got one. I just, and this is going forward for next year, we're going to be able to start in time to be on time.
Yes, sir.
For this next one, because I promised we wouldn't, this one would happen this time, and it did, so.
Yes, sir. I think there was just, you know, the audit was, the 2022 audit was finalized, like I said, I think the report date was June 22nd, or excuse me, June 28th. I think it's safe to say that it was a pretty big effort for the county to go through and record all the adjustments. I mean, it was nearly $100 million in changes from when we started, the 2022, to when we finished, to get all that recorded, do the required financial closeout so that you could be ready to be audited again within the timeframe. We started our audit fieldwork at the first part of November. I don't think that there's anything necessarily wrong with that timeframe going forward. I think, given the timeframe that we're at now and being issued at this point in time, there'd be plenty of time to get any changes from 2023 recorded and be closed out and be ready to rock and roll for '24. And of course, we're open to starting sooner in the event that the county's ready. I think it just depends on when the county's ready. We do not want to audit a moving target that, you know, changes just to force a certain date. But yeah, I don't see any issue with the starting sooner and certainly have it issued by December 31st.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Ms. Green?
Yes, I just want to try to get a handle on the bonds that you're talking about, the bond costs that should have been set aside. I think that that was the money, if I recall, Neil, that was the money that Dominion gave us that essentially paid down some of that bond money. Is that correct?
So the Facilities Corporation issued bonds, and they were Series 2021, so they were issued sometime in 2021. And a portion of the monies used to refund those bonds was settlement money. It was a county contribution to get to the total. There were, the principal amount of the 2013 bonds that was outstanding was greater than what was issued with the 2021 bonds. So the county had to kick in a little extra money to affect the refunding. The interesting thing about the way bonds work is oftentimes those bonds, the refunded bonds, the old ones, have what's called a call date, and they cannot be paid off until that call date. Sometimes that call date is their final maturity date, sometimes it's sooner. It's really just protecting the bond investors to make sure that they get the money that they anticipated on interest, and it doesn't all of a sudden get repaid sooner than they anticipated. So these bonds, the 2013 A and B bonds that were refunded, have a call date that has not been met yet. So the county's, when the refunding transaction took place, the county was required to deposit the proceeds needed to pay the principal and interest until the call date. And so because the county doesn't show a liability anymore for the 13 A and B bonds, it doesn't get the benefit of recording the cash that's set aside to pay that. And all this is done by the trustee, which I think is Regions Bank. But the bond trustee makes all the principal and interest payments. The county doesn't have to do anything, shouldn't have to pay any additional money. It's all up to them. So it's sort of like if you're going to record the cash, then you got to record the old bonds, too. And the old bonds are defeased, so they're coming off, the cash goes away, too, and it's all with the trustee now.
One more thing, and this might not be for you, this may be staff, but if I remember reading that, is it part of your firm that is handling the appeal process and the amount was somewhere, that they anticipated was somewhere over $400,000, or was that right? And?
We'll get to it in just a few minutes on my report, but that's essentially going to help us do that.
I'll be honest with you, I intended to stay for that discussion. Today's my anniversary, and my wife would skin me if I don't head out. But if, I don't want to get in front of anything, but if, you know, if y'all have any follow-up questions, or if you have anything right now, I mean, Mr. Killian's right, I don't want to jump ahead, but yeah, I think we feel pretty good about 400 grand, being able to get that back. And we've got an in-house tax council, but that's all she does, is track down mostly Affordable Care Act penalties and has a real high success rate with getting that back. Of course, nothing's given, but we feel pretty good about what we understand.
I appreciate you being here, and we'll let Mr. Killian discuss that in his county administrator's report. Happy anniversary to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we are down to item seven, first public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, Don Goldbach.
Good evening, Don Goldbach, District 2. I'd like to comment on the comprehensive plan, one specific comment and one general comment. The specific is related to Chapter 8, the economy and economic development. In there, there's a whole section about Scout Motors, and one of the quotes there is, "The Scout Motors facility will have a tremendous impact and provide opportunities for thousands of residents. Fairfield County should work with partners to harness the spillover potential for related investments." In the summary of observations in this chapter, there's a quote that says, "The I-77 megasite and the Scout Motors development both have the potential to offer transformative economic development opportunities for Fairfield County." And then it goes into goal number seven for this whole chapter, which is to support diverse and resilient economy that includes a thriving industrial sector, and support for small local businesses and other things. And then after that, there's 15 strategies. There's seven that talk about promoting the county, marketing the county, and other various activities. Two talk about hiring a new director and forming a new county office, but there's not one strategy that mentions Scout Motors specifically. And with all of this previously stated tremendous impact and potential, there's nothing in there specifically about Scout. Now, I was really pleased to read last week's voice, and Mr. Killian is aware of Scout, and will take steps to actually discuss with them potential opportunities for Fairfield County. Such a large manufacturing facility will require parts, maybe even some sub-assemblies. So to me, there's a great opportunity for Fairfield County to locate some of that here, right up the road from their operation. So thank you, Mr. Killian, for recognizing that. And I would also like to, I'm very pleased to have you in our county. Your knowledge, your experience, and your leadership, I think, are already evident, so thank you for that. So that was the specific about economic development. Short thing about Chapter 9, every chapter has summary of observations, but it doesn't seem to be in Chapter 9, so you might want to ask Mr. Sprouse about that. The general comment, and we touched on this a little bit earlier, I think we had a question from council about the implementation plan. Now, the way I read this comprehensive plan, it's a long list of wish, it's a wish list of things we'd like to do. And I think what needs to happen next is an implementation plan, and using something called SMART objectives. Now, SMART means intelligent, but it also stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. And I'm running out of time, but it has to do with who, what, and when. So I think we need to transition from this wish list into a more specific implementation plan. Thank you.
Anne Correia. My name is Anne Correia, District 2. I'd like to speak to item 9, the comprehensive plan of Fairfield County, and item 14A and B, Sheriff's Office and IRS appeals. In place of speaking to the good, bad, and the ugly, I'm going to speak to the positive progression of our county council. In regards to the comprehensive plan, I'd like to commend the council for providing presentations on the items I addressed at the previous council meeting. It's like you read the minds of your constituents. The presentation on broadband was extremely informative as to their goals and objectives in allocating the $400 million intermittently through grant programs, with completion times estimated at two years. Thank you, council, for asking about coverage to students, for it's important that the county focuses on the successful education of our youth. Thank you for addressing the volunteer and full-time positions of our firefighters and updating us on the staffing. I feel it would be to the county's benefit to offer incentivized programs to attract more volunteers into the training programs and to look into manning our stations more efficiently across the county. Some of the constituents of District 2 have participated in a focus group discussion on the issues of the county, and we're pleased to hear from Mr. Killian at the last council meeting, that he and his staff are exploring every avenue to recoup funds from the IRS penalty payout. This will recoup taxpayer dollars, and for that, we are grateful. But at the same time, we are holding our breaths in hopes that this type of incompetence seen IRS reporting will be avoided in the future. I was asked to extend a thank you to the county council for looking out for the citizens of Fairfield County by providing much-needed information, and we are looking forward to further updates. In regards to the sheriff's request for the new car purchase, item 14A, I feel it is imperative to support our law enforcement and their needs. In attending the citizens' academy is all I can say, is bravo, a must-do by every citizen. Our law enforcement is not competitive in pay with surrounding counties, which makes recruiting and longevity of the occupation an issue. They also are in need of replacing old equipment to perform their jobs. We need to stand behind our law enforcement, EMS workers, and firefighters. In summation, it was appreciated that Maudlin and Jenkins was here this evening to update us on the 2023 audit, and the council appears to be making moves in the right direction, providing the public with information. Every one of you makes up a team that needs to be collaboratively effective and make your citizens feel heard, connected to its council, and valued. The town of Windsboro is feeling the impact of communication and effectiveness by having one of the largest citizen turnouts at its last meeting. Congratulations and kudos for progress. Thank you.
Randy Bright.
It was very encouraging to hear some good news out of the audit, a lot of good news, quite frankly. I had one question, a clarification that I would like to get cleared up at some point. The fund balance that the auditor was talking about, did he include the restricted funds in that fund balance when he was talking about both amount and number of days or number of weeks, months that it covered? As of about a year ago, we had some $5 million, or at least $3.5 million in the restricted funds, which we couldn't put towards anything else but the leases on this building. So my point is, is that if you, say you have a fund balance, and the fund balance is X amount, but that includes $3 million in restricted funds, you don't really have that much of a buffer as you think you do because of the restricted funds. If he was referring to without restricted funds, that's great. If not, we need to take another look at it. Then going back to the comprehensive plan, I agree, it's good that we got a plan done. It's probably the most well-presented plan I've seen in this century for this county. Good job in the presentation. However, it has one failing, it's already been pointed out, that we've always had, that we've never been able to execute our 10-year plan. Last one turned out to be a 14-year plan, but anyway. And that is, we don't have the accountability specified, as previously mentioned, in specific SMART terms so that we can get execution. I challenge you to challenge each category that's been driven by a department or group of departments mentioned in the implementation plan to develop a SMART plan as referred to. There's no how-to, when, where, why, specifically who, there's no accountability to any one person in there. And these plans are not going to work unless each group that's mentioned in the implementation plan draws up specific SMART plans to execute this plan. That's the only way it's going to happen. I'll give you one quick example. This year, and last year, has the same plan, basically, for population. Last time, in 2010, we said, grow the population with economic activity and other stuff, but we had no real specific SMART plans to it. So what happened? We shrunk the population, and our economic activity was such that we still remained in the body. that we still remained in the bottom thirty percent of all counties in, in the state. Thank you.
No one else sign up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Next, we are down to item eight, public hearings, none. Number nine, ordinance resolutions and orders. A, first reading by title only. Ordinance number eight thirty-three, in ordinance of adopting the comprehensive plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, 2024 dash 2034, and other matters related thereto.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. There is no discussion, it's by title only. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero oh nine A. Number ten, board and commission minutes. There is none, board and commission appointments, there is none. Number twelve, old business, short-term rental update, Mr. or Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. Just wanted to give you all an update on, as you may know, the members of the committee did approve some recommendations to draft a short-term rental ordinance back in December, well, early January. We have since lost the planning and development director. We are receiving applications and doing interviews now, but our recommendation is to wait until we have that position filled so that we can actually have someone who can help lead the implementation of the ordinance. As you all know, ordinance is only good as, as you can implement it. And without any leadership in the department, that's our recommendation, is that we'll continue to work on drafting the ordinance, but once we have a, that position filled, then we'll bring it back to council for final review and adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add to that, we have conducted one interview and have a couple more. The, the one we have conducted is very promising, so we may have somebody on board fairly quickly, that's the hope.
Thank you. Number thirteen, new business, none. Fourteen, county administrator's report. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, first item, good evening, members of council and Mr. Chairman. The first item is the sheriff's office request to purchase a vehicle. Now, they have had a vehicle that was totaled sometime back. We received an insurance settlement of just under forty-seven thousand dollars for, to replace that vehicle. And that is right at the amount needed to replace the vehicle. The problem is, we need to outfit the vehicle once we get it, and that's about another eighty-two hundred dollars. We would recommend that council award that purchase, and let me work with the sheriff's office, we're about three and a half months from the end of the fiscal year, to see what their budget might be able to take of that eighty-two hundred dollars. And if not, we've got it in our contingency fund to replace that vehicle. But, we need, we certainly need to take advantage of that insurance settlement to get that vehicle replaced.
Thank you, Mr. Killian. As council members are aware, this is a action item. Is there any more comments or questions for Mr. Killian on the insurance settlement and the approval of a new vehicle for the sheriff's department?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
It's been moved and properly seconded, seeing no discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the action item for the sheriff's department. Next, Mr. Killian on the Martin and Jenkins proposal.
Yes, sir, we've already touched on that just a bit earlier when Mr. Davis was here. As he mentioned, they have a tax division that does nothing but tax work, and they are, have become quite proficient at appeals, particularly of the Affordable Care Act. That doesn't mean they're gonna be successful every time, but we do have a proposal in front of you tonight to engage them to appeal what they believe is appealable. They're gonna look at the entire amount. They're not very optimistic about some of it, but the, the four hundred thousand that was mentioned tonight is something that they are, are hopeful that we can help recover, or they can help us recover. The proposal is not to exceed forty thousand dollars. They're gonna be, you know, charge their hourly rates to do that. If the appeal doesn't take that much, it won't, it won't cost that much. But, working with IRS is a tedious process, and these folks are, that's what they specialize in. And we'd recommend that, that you engage them to do that. As an aside, we have gotten an extension this year to file our ACA reports until May, early May, I forget the exact date. They originally do the end of this month. We are going through and cleaning up our personnel records that probably created some of the confusion to start with. But, we now have a path forward in getting that fixed. We have to get some new access, since we've changed finance directors to the IRS. That's a bit of a tedious and laborious process, too. But, we're in the process of getting that cleaned up, but that should help us going forward, and we should be able to get our reports done this year on time. But, to do the recovery, we would ask that you engage Maglan and Jenkins to do that.
Okay, council, that is an action item as well.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. Next, we are down to fourteen C. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief. We are, as you know, in the process of doing the next phase of renovations of the courthouse, and that's gonna require some relocation of several offices. We've been putting out information to where folks can go to visit the offices they may need. The probate court will be at 260 Bratton Street. The auditor, the treasurer, and the tax collector will be at 117 South Congress Street, which is the old planning office next door to the courthouse. And then the tax assessor's gonna move to the, the old behavioral health facility on two, at 200 Calhoun Street. The challenge, though, is starting with Good Friday, the courthouse is gonna have to close so we can get those relocations done. So, it'll be, we were scheduled, it's a scheduled holiday for the county on Good Friday, anyway. But, the entire next week is probably gonna be closed as well as we get those folks set up in their new locations with all the IT and everything that needs to be done with that. So, ask for indulgence and patience for the public as we close down that week to, to get those folks moved in so we can complete those renovations on the courthouse. That's just an information item.
Any comment or questions on the courthouse?
No, I'm just gonna ask, well, I had a question for Mr. Clark. Can I ask? I just wanted to ask the, will the audit be online?
Normally posted, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the point Randy talked about, the restricted fund, do we know if that's restricted fund, is in that sixty million?
I will, I will have to clear it up, I'm not sure, but I'll check with Mr. Davis tomorrow.
And the, the one point four million that we paid out, is that reflected in the budget? Is it the one point four million that we paid, you know, with the penalties and all that?
Right.
That's out of the budget?
It came out of the general fund.
So, it, it is reflected, and it's not there?
Right. I mean, what year did we pay that?
We paid that probably last year, charged it back to last fiscal year.
It was charged back to fiscal year 23.
Next, we are down to, thank you, Mr. Killian and Ms. Williams. Next, we are down to clerk of council's report, none. Now, we are down to county council time. Any council members? Mr. Roof.
I just wanted to make, and most people may already be aware, but we had a former councilwoman, Ms. Bertha Goins, that her husband, James, passed away Saturday morning, I believe. I think he'd been sick for quite some time, but I actually talked to, I called her when I, when I found out. And, but anyway, just wanted everybody to keep her and all the family in their prayers. She was a, she's a mighty fine lady, he was also. Thank you.
Any other council members?
Yes, please.
Ms. Green.
First, I'd like to thank those who were involved in the short-term rental discussions for coming out tonight. And as was mentioned by Mrs. Williams and Mr. Killian, we will be working on getting that staff before we move forward on the short-term rental. I'd like to certainly mention the fact that last week I attended, along with Mr. Roseborough, the Rule Summit. And most of the time, you wonder what goes on at a Rule Summit. It brings together a number of small counties to really take a look at how things are progressing in their communities and what kind of programs have been proven successful. So, a number of communities are looking at, walkable communities, making sure that there are lots of places for the members of the community to exercise and all of those kinds of things. And I think you heard about the recreation economy that we've been considering for a while. And those kinds of things just dovetail with the items that were discussed at that Rule Summit. Again, taking a look at transportation as being a big thing in the rural communities, as well as Main Street innovations and some of the things that are possible to really bring our main streets up with e-commerce and all kinds of other things that are kind of new. Of course, our challenges have always been and probably will continue to be those that revolve around staffing. And we hear about the number of police officers, the number of firefighters, and the numbers of EMS workers that we need. And that tends to be a trend throughout the state and probably throughout the nation. Again, with smaller counties, taking a look at salaries and competitiveness and trying to really look at how we might revitalize in an economical way. The, the state is talking a lot about energy resilience and going forward to get some of the national monies in South Carolina nexus and trying to make sure that, taking a look at upgrading some of the, not necessarily nuclear stations, but taking a look at how the net, how gas and other kinds of things might be used in the future. And I think you are hearing that the Public Service Committee will hear pretty soon some requests from Dominion Energy for upgrades. And I know that they're, they'll be hearing from Duke Energy for rate increases. And some of those increases are like fourteen percent for rate increases. And there have been lots of discussions that those rate increases are pretty high when it comes time for our senior citizens and our low-income people because the energy costs are basically outpacing their income and certainly the fact that their income is limited. So, all of those are discussions that are had at the, the Rule Summit. But, the summit culminated in, with Governor McMaster presenting to Macio Nance, who's the senior advisor to the secretary, the South Carolina Department of Commerce, the Order of the Palmetto Award. And essentially, Macio has been the person who has really championed economic development throughout the state for a very long time and has worked very diligently to train a lot of the staff that are involved in economic development, as well as county council people, to really bring them up to date on all of the processes and procedures that are necessary in economic development. So, that's just an overview of the Rule Summit, and I think it's certainly a beneficial kind of conference for both staff and for the county. So, thank you so much for Sneethia Williams and others attending as well. Thank you, I forgot about you, Sneethia. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any other council members? We have no executive session for tonight. I will entertain another motion. It's been motion and property seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?